Morning, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Tuesday November fifth. Special meeting and call the meeting to order and ask for approval of the agenda. All in favor? Yeah, okay. First item on the agenda will be public comment. Is there anyone? In the room that would like to make public comment? Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make public comment? If you'd raise your hand? Okay. So we give our. Please and keep it under three minutes, kind and respectful, please.
Thank you. My name is Marin Calvert. My address is seven hundred Washington Suite. Washington Street, Suite seven oh one Vancouver, Washington, and I am here to speak on agenda item number one. Would you like me to wait for that agenda item or just go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm appearing on behalf of the applicant for agenda item number one. And I'd like to talk about three primary issues and I'll keep it within the three minutes that you've provided. First, I'll talk about the reasons that de novo review would be appropriate. Second, the standards for appellate review. And third, the staff's redactions. The primary reason for de novo review by the city council is because the applicant had no notice. That the planning commission was considering applying municipal code seventeen seventy-two oh three oh A outside the required rear yard. The code itself says explicitly that it applies quote inside the required rear yard. And city staff, Mr. St. Clair, had approved Mr. Shelton's permit. Um, in the first instance, knowing precisely where the shed was and where, how big it was. So it appeared that city staff agreed that the plain language of the code meant what it said. Subsections one through four of seventeen seventy-two oh three oh A applied inside the required rear yard. In fact, no one ever argued to the contrary during the proceedings below, and the transcript shows that the phrase required rear yard was never even mentioned. Once during the hearing. This is important because the applicant, Mr. Shelton, was the responding party during the proceedings below. His burden was to respond to the arguments that were raised on appeal, and this issue was never raised by anyone. The burden of proof to what to raise all of the relevant arguments on appeal was on the appellate, Ms. Nuvin. And she did not raise this inside outside argument. In fact, the planning commission didn't mention it once during the hearing. It only mentioned that interpretation in its final decision that was published after the hearing had closed. Mr. Shelton therefore had no way to know that this issue needed to be addressed until after the opinion was published. The staff report's conclusion that Mr. Shelton's request for de novo review therefore is his own fault and necessitated by a failure to present evidence. That was available at the time is inaccurate. In fact, the staff report inaccurately concludes that the notice of appeal does not discuss any of the factors of municipal code seventeen dot eighteen dot oh six oh. And that too is incorrect. All three factors of that code section are addressed on page two, section one of the appeal narrative. The staff report also incorrectly argues that the linchpin of the appeal is an argument that Mr. Shelton intends to use the shed as a guest house. As you'll note, my time is nearly up and I've never even mentioned this argument yet. Yes, it is an argument that we've raised, but it is in no way the linchpin of the appeal. Furthermore.
Excuse me, you do need to wrap it up.
Yes, the staff report improperly redacts several pieces of evidence. For example, the redactions on page three. Arguing Mr. St. Clair's decision was consistent with the plain language of the code was argued during the proceedings below. See the paragraph above it and the redactions on page five regarding exception six.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes?
So you.
Guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, Jody.
Okay, I'm asking you to wrap it up, please.
Yes, I'll finish my sentence. The arguments regarding exception six were explicitly discussed.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Maureen, I apologize. We have not reached that agenda item. The public hearing has not been opened. We're gonna have to have you pause. And then we'll let you provide the applicant's. A case as soon as that agenda item starts. So I apologize, I couldn't get through to stop you in advance. What's that?
This is just for the scope of review. So we're allowing her public comment.
You're the scope of review for agenda item number one?
Yes. It's not a public hearing.
Okay, okay. All right, um, it sounded like she was presenting a case. So, um, my recommendation is that you hold off until you get to that. Specific agenda item and then provide for public comment at that time. That's my recommendation. Um, public comment.
Still, she has finished her public comment, though.
Finished it?
Yeah, she stopped.
All right, um, so. Maureen, I wanted to be very, very clear on the record that everything you just said is not part of your, um, land use decision. Record. It is a public comment. Portion of the city council. So if you want to reiterate what you just said during the actual agenda item, that will incorporate into. The land use record or the planning record. I'm not entirely sure what the decision is. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, okay. Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Continue.
I'm gonna mute her. Maureen, right? She's done talking right now?
She's done. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? If you raise your hand. Okay, so we will go ahead and go on to action items. First item on the agenda is scope of review determination. For Michael Shelton, appeal of a planning commission decision to uphold administrative appeal AA twenty-five oh two.
And Carrie's gonna handle this one.
Okay, go ahead, Carrie. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Knapp and city councillors. I'm Carrie Richter. I am the city's, uh, land use attorney. Uh, I have prepared for you a staff report and materials that are in the agenda packet. I'm not gonna read those, but. As you know, what is before you is an appeal of a planning commission denial for an accessory structure built in the backyard of an existing home. Located at two thirty-one East Monroe Street. The denial was based on the application of the accessory structure location criteria. Uh, that apply where accessory structure is located within the rear yard. Uh, in their statement of appeal, the applicant, who is also the appellant, has requested de novo review. On one issue and on the record review on another. The de novo review is necessary according to the appellant in order for the. Nature of the use to change. Initially, the application indicated that this structure was a shed and would be used for storage. Uh, in the appeal statement, the this structure will be used as a guest house. And the, uh, city's code does authorize a guest house as an accessory structure. Just so the council knows, a guest house is different than an accessory dwelling unit. A guest house has no kitchen. And is used for temporary use, uh, without, uh, any payment of compensation. Uh, accessory dwelling unit, as you know, has a kitchen and is a fully contained residential unit. The, on the record review that the applicant's requesting has to do with one of the. Accessory structure location criteria that talks about, uh, view protection. Um, and on that issue, the applicant would like to have an on the record review. The criteria that the city uses to determine the review is set forth in Cannon Beach Municipal Code seventeen dot eighteen dot oh six oh. I'm not gonna read them all out entirely, but the focus is on whether. One, the additional testimony could have been presented at the prior hearing. Two, whether the evidence is necessary for proper evaluation. And sort of number three is the good faith conditions of the of the applicant. In terms of their good faith in presenting evidence as they were aware of it. Um, the applicant does not address these criteria. Um, the applicant argues that. Um, they did not know of the planning commission's interpretation with respect to those locational criteria. And, uh, if they had known, they would have presented the evidence that they, uh, now wish to present. Uh, I'm not sure that I, uh, quite see the connection there. Um, certainly if the applicant, uh, understood that, uh. That their proposal was for a guest house when they started this, then they probably would have represented that the structure would be used. For habitation in the application. Um, but that is for the councils to decide. Um, suffice it to say that staff has been unable to identify any reason why the appellant was unable to present this additional evidence. Um, if the council is inclined to hold a hearing on the record. Uh, the motion that the council makes today should also reject from the record the new evidence contained in the notice of appeal. Um, and, uh, that new evidence, uh, has been identified in a redacted version in the packet. At page seventy-four to ninety. Um, so the motion would be to strike pages ten through seventy-four of the packet. Certainly, if there were any mistakes in the redaction and there were, there are items that are not new that could be raised. The appellant will have an opportunity to raise those arguments, not evidence, arguments. At the hearing on the substance that will happen in a couple of weeks. I'd be happy to answer any questions. That's my staff report. Um, if you all have any.
Does anyone have any questions? No questions, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess, excuse me, I guess I need to check with Jody. We have to have. Um, Ms. Calvert, say everything again.
So I'm not, I, excuse me. I'd like to, I'd like to respond since I'm the, I'm the city's land use council on this.
Okay.
I, um, you know, I, I don't think it's, it's up to the mayor and the council whether you would like to take testimony from participants. Um, I don't think you have a practice of doing so. Uh, but certainly it is your prerogative to do so, but if you're going to take testimony from the applicant. Um, you know, you, you, we really ought to take testimony from others like the appellant below. Who might also have some things to say about the scope of review. Um, so again, usually it's not something that the council takes testimony, public testimony on. So I don't think that, I don't think that the applicant's attorney ought to be necessarily is entitled to another opportunity.
Okay, anybody wanting to hear again?
Barb, just to be clear.
Yeah, we don't do that.
Excuse me, mayor, apologies. Just to be clear. Uh, I wanted to make it clear to Maureen, I apologize if I said that name right, that what she was. Zenting on is not part of the decision on this agenda item. Generally speaking, in in parliamentary procedure, you're not supposed to allow public comment on an agenda item. So I just wanted to make that clear across the board. So if council doesn't want to take additional testimony, that's their call.
Okay, and we're agreed?
Yeah.
That we're fine with that. Okay, so let's have our discussion. Anybody?
Well, I, I. I'm inclined to go along with the recommendations of city staff. And the land use attorneys, um, I, I'm actually kind of bothered by the fact that. The, um. The application has changed now. When it was presented, it was for a storage shed. Now it's for habitation. I think that if the appellant wants to go back to the planning, planning commission with their new. Their new idea, then that's certainly their prerogative. They can take that, but it's not. The planning commission hasn't even heard. That the, uh, application with this new, um, use in place, so.
Guest house standards and ADU standards fall under a different category than accessory structures.
Right, so I think we need to, I think that if they want to present that again, reapply for that, that's great. But as far as this is concerned, I say that I, I agree with. Our attorney and our, uh, planning staff that should be on the record, the whole thing.
Anybody else?
I, I agree with Lisa. The standards for housing need to be clear and separate from standards for storage. And if we're, if we're talking about housing, hundred percent is a different application than if this is just a storage space. And we need more housing, but if this, if this wasn't an application for housing, it's not an application for housing in the first place.
Okay, anybody willing to make a motion?
I move that we reject the, uh. I move that we hear this totally, this, this appeal totally on the record. And reject, reject the new evidence, uh, referenced in this appeal specifically pages ten through seventy-four.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please, Jen?
Counsel Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel President Kerr.
Yeah.
Counsel Ostrander.
Yes.
Counsel Hammond.
Yes.
Mayor Knapp.
Yes. Okay, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
You too, bye.
Bye. Okay, next we have consideration of resolution twenty-five twenty-eight for the purpose of condemning non. Transparent federal immigration enforcement tactics reaffirming commitment to constitutional and community safety principles. And.
Jody.
Jody is going to give our staff report.
Um, okay, so this. This came at the request of council. Work session, I think it was the one I was at, so a couple of weeks ago. Yes. Um, staff drafted up. Um, a resolution as requested. I reviewed it and made a couple tweaks. And this is the resolution that we are providing here today. Are there questions about the language?
No, I just want to add that, um, the police department also reviewed it very carefully.
Okay.
Our police department. So, and I would like to thank everyone for their quick response to this request.
I move to approve resolution, resolution twenty-five twenty-eight for the purposes of condemning. Non-transparent federal immigration enforcement tactics reaffirming commitment to constitutional and community safety principles.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please, Jen?
Counsel President Kerr.
Yes.
Counsel Ostrander.
Yes.
Counsel Hammond.
Yes.
Counsel Hayes.
Yes.
Mayor Knapp.
Yes. Okay, and, um, I just want to make sure it's okay with the council if I do send this resolution after it's signed to, um. The organization that sent us the statement. That's okay with everybody. Okay, great, thanks very much. And again, thanks to the staff and, and attorneys and. Everything for getting it done so quickly. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the, um, contract employee item.
Um, I think, sorry, don't we interrupt. I think this one's me too.
Okay.
Yes, okay. Um, so. Um, Karen. La Bontay, I believe that's how you pronounce it. The, um, I believe she's still current public works director, but her last day is.
The twenty-eighth.
Okay. Um, she is, her services are still needed, mostly having to do with, with litigation that's ongoing. And so we, um, requested that she enter into an employee employment agreement with the city. So she'll still be an employee, but she'll be under different terms, um, than her. Current position, because it's really going to be, her scope of service is going to be mostly specific to this. Uh, litigation, so the agreement. I do want to call out one thing and the reason that it's in front of council instead of just having Bruce sign it. Is that we incorporated language into the agreement. Under, um. It's on page two, it's, uh, number ten. And it's, it's essentially stating that if an OGET complaint is filed against, um, Karen. Then at Bruce's discretion or the city manager's discretion, um, the city will ultimately defend. Her in that action. So. What's that?
A complaint that's relevant to this litigation, you mean?
Um, no, the scope's pretty broad. It's, it's essentially a, a complaint against her in relation to her employment with the city.
Oh, okay, but yeah. It's still, it still would have to do with.
Yes, so it would have to do with her work at the city, for sure.
And so you use the word mostly, um, for, um. Settlement discussions, that that is mostly what this is going to be. Is there any other scope included? Or is it only for the purpose of? The litigation. Of this employment contract.
Um, I, I believe that the, the large majority of, of any time that she's giving will be. Time spent on the litigation. However, I think that Bruce wanted to leave it open in case there's some succession planning issues that come up. We can still call her. Chris can call her and say, how does this work? Um. So we didn't nail her down directly to the litigation, just on the off chance that we need her sort of wisdom. For something that's not related.
Uh, so like, that's something I had concern, concerns with, that if she were just to regularly retire. They would have to ask her on a voluntary basis to provide that information. And because of the extenuating circumstances of a completely separate issue with the lawsuit, now she would get compensated for that. Information.
I don't think that's gonna be much of the time spent by her. I don't imagine that. I would imagine that the vast majority of the invoices that we'll see from her will have to do with litigation. I don't, I don't see it being. Um, much more than that.
So do we limit that amount of time? Do we kind of set a scope that?
No, I mean, the contract can be broken by either party, you know, at any time, so. I think that, you know, if things were, if there was any abuse, which I can't imagine, that then that, then we could take care of it then. I guess I'm not understanding what specific, can you give me an example of what you're concerned about? I'm not getting it.
Just paying two people for the same job, paying, um. For Karen as her retired con, now contract employee. To provide information to the new public works director who was hired to do the job, and then them essentially tag teaming. The job and both getting compensated for it as opposed to.
So like.
The director taking.
So.
Ownership over the.
He's taking charge of the water residency project. And if he had a question about it, then you're concerned that she would get compensated for answering this question.
That's, that's, that's my concern, because if she were to just straight up retire, like a typical situation as the, outside of having this NEDC lawsuit. She wouldn't get compensated for that. It would, she's retired, she's done. If she were to come back and provide information, it would be on voluntary basis, like, oh, yeah, hey, I know.
Or as a contract, and that's what, I mean, that's what I thought was gonna ha, might happen in the beginning. It's because she's been in charge of that project, so maybe she'd come back on a contract basis to advise, but that obviously didn't happen. But I, I don't. I don't see why that's. If it's for the benefit of the city. And it's, and unless it was abused, you know, the, the.
But I, I agree with Eric. He's right. If, if I had a job and I retired. And there was a big project that I was working on, whoever was my successor would, would take that over. Most likely with the help of. My assistant, Trevor, or. My boss is going to fill that gap until the other person is up to speed. I wouldn't get paid. I mean, it would have to be something. I just, I, I don't, I don't, I don't agree with it. Um, I do agree for the lawsuit purposes, but I don't feel that, um. That we should. I mean. I know what you're saying. I'm not saying under, I do, I'm hearing what you're saying. Um, I just.
If I can, I know that, um, there was a rush to get this through because we need her for December first. There's a mediation on December first that we need her for, um. If it. If it would work, you could do an, a separate direction to staff. Not to reach out to her for anything staff related, and that would nip that piece in the bud. I don't think you necessarily need to amend the contract, because you control when you reach out to her, the city does. So you could just put some sort of internal directive that. She's to be contacted for litigation only.
I, I don't share the concern that Eric and Deanna have. I, I trust. That, um, the parties involved will handle everything professionally as they always have.
And I, I agree with Barb. I, I, I'm not concerned about that. If there was some critical question and her help was needed for an hour, I'd be thrilled if she helped.
And it might not even take an hour.
Yeah, or five minutes, you know, and I, I mean, I just, I just don't. I think that's. To me, it's a little paranoid.
I think, I don't think paranoid is a good word. It's called good business practice not to do that. Um.
You don't have to tell me.
So, well, that I'm just, that's my opinion.
Gary, do you have any thoughts?
Apparently I've been shushed.
Well, no, I just meant the tone it was going. I wanted to, if you still want to say something, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Okay.
Um, to me, this discussion is. I mean, the big question to me is about how much we're talking about, how much is Karen going to be needed? Oh, but I, I think it's reasonable. Uh, to compensate her time, you know, a limited amount of her time for a project of this scope. And then there's the being involved in the, uh, litigation as well, so. You know, I hope it's not a lot of money we're talking about, but it seems, uh, to be. A legitimate thing, uh, for a limited amount of time. Uh, I mean, I. I'm, I have some questions about that. Uh, item ten and exactly what we're committing to as far as. Essentially indemnifying her, uh, is this just limited to Oregon Ethics Commission? Violations?
So that particular clause is specific to OGET complaints, um.
And that's got a thirty day. Uh. So it would be a complaint within the last thirty days or.
Yeah, going forward, yes. Um, so she's, she's an employee, so she will continue to be covered by, um. The Torque Claims Act, uh, by ORS, so that piece is, I didn't feel the need to reiterate what's in statute. Um, but because OGET complaints are not covered. Under that statute, um, she requested indemnification, um, in the event that. Um, it sounds like she already had an OGET complaint filed against her and this council, um, approved. Uh, reimbursement to her. She asked specifically if she could get indemnification upfront, should it happen again? And so that's what was included in this.
And it was a prior council.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, just, just to be clear. Okay, any other discussion? Indiana, really, if you want to say something, go ahead. Okay, any other discussion? Indiana, really, if you want to say something, go ahead.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Anybody would like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the contract employee agreement for Karen LaBonte.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Counsel Ostrander.
Yes.
Counsel Hammond.
Yes.
Counsel Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel President Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Knapp.
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. Does anyone have anything to put in the order? Okay, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone.